Oh, before we were on.
I don't know. Are you guys ready?
Ready?
Ready? Here me on the record. Okay. Okay, it is officially one oh five. I have been to say yes, technical issues. Thank you for waiting. Um, it's not in the record for a planning here. It'll be Commissioner McDonald's last planning hearing. Um, and so to start out with, uh, we got, uh, one file we're taking up today. Originally the agenda had two, but one of them had to be postponed. So the one file is B zero zero one five dash two two. And, uh, is there anybody in the audience that has a hearing or speech issue that needs some help? Hear your speech, hearing or, uh, or yeah, whatever, hearing or visual issue they do, but yeah. Doing this for six years and said, there go blankers. Uh, seen.
Check down early.
Seen done. Yeah, sure. Seen done is, uh, I'll go ahead and call for conflicts of interest.
Commissioner Conley has no conflict. Commissioner Redchild has no conflict.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. I have no conflict. Uh, with that, I will go and turn it over to staff to start us out.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Spotty and Bonner County Planning Department. We are here for a, for the hearing of, uh, of a variance file requesting a minimum lot size variance to, um, to reduce the lot size from five acres minimum to three point zero six acres and one point five six acres, five four acres in a rural pipe zone. So it's an unplanted property. The total area of the parcel sizes, uh, parcel sizes four point six acres. It is zone number five and has a land use designation of rural residential. The majority of the site consists of map slopes between fifteen to twenty nine percent grade. A portion of the side does, does contain thirty percent grades and over. Uh, it does not contain any mapped wetlands. There, it does contain, it does not contain any river or stream frontages. Parcel is within flood hazard zone X, um, and it wouldn't require any further flooding review. The site will be served by individual wells, individual septic system. It is within the bounds of West Side Fire District. It will be served by Avista Utilities and Lake Pondre School District eighty four. These are the agencies that were notified of this request. Panhandle Health District, IDWR, Road Department, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, West Side Fire, Avista Utilities, Fish and Wildlife, Lake Pondre School District, Idaho Department of Fish and Game, Bonus County Schools Transportation, Environmental Quality, ITD Forest Service, and Area of City Impact Dover. We received comments from these agencies, Idaho Transportation Department, Water Resources, and Panhandle Health District. ITD says, I have attached an aerial parcel now with the, with the approaches circle. Both are accessed from Lot One. Both can be seen in the exhibit from the county also attached. These are the two approaches I'm referring to. Unfortunately, regardless of the amount of time the approaches have been used, all access to the highway must be permitted by the state. ITD has only jurisdiction over access directly to the highway, so we would not require any permit for, for access from voltage drive to car creek ride. Idaho Department of Water Resources, uh, says that they take no position on this proposal, uh, but recognize that some of the activities will fall in the, in their jurisdiction. Panhandle Health and Street replied that the application states there is to be an individual septic, uh, for both of the new lots. Um, PhD, PhD has record for, uh, septic permit on one lot, not the other. Actually, it has for both. I apologize. I correct myself. Two public comments were received, both in opposition of this variance proposal. Uh, these are the standards against which this file was reviewed. The three main standards against which a variance request is reviewed are here. Conditions apply to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, uh, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, and other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. So it turns out that other properties in the vicinity of the subject parcel have the same topography, same, uh, similar, very similar, slopes either higher than the property or similar to the property. Special conditions and circumstances do not result from the application, from the actions of the applicant. These topographical, to- topographical conditions were present on the property before the applicant bought the property. So these conditions have not been created by the applicant. However, the applicant is requesting to subdivide the property into two smaller parcels which, due to which there is a need for a variance. Um, granting of this variance will not be detrimental to the public health. We have not received any comments from the public agencies or the general public indicating how this variance might be harmful to public health, uh, safety or welfare, or be materially ingenious to properties in the neighboring vicinity. The findings of facts have not changed since the time the staff report was prepared. The applicants did buy the property in twenty twenty. Uh, it's approximately four point six acre parcel and it is, it is zone rural pipe. Um, property does contain slopes between fifteen to twenty nine percent and over thirty percent grade or higher. It is located off Highway Two in section twenty six township fifty seven not range three west. Uh, the conclusions of law have not changed since the time the staff report was prepared. Conditions do apply to the property that are generally similar to other properties in the vicinity. Uh, they do not result from the applications of the, from the actions of the applicant and the variance, granting of the variance would not be in conflict if granted today with the public interest. Staff recommends denial of the variance hearing examiner decision was to deny the application that was on November sixteen twenty twenty two. And I can take any questions at this time.
Yeah, any questions for staff?
I have one at least. Um, so, so wouldn't it, wouldn't you be better off to apply for a zone change to try to go down under rather than a variance? Or do you have to have both?
No, you just have to have one. So they applied for a zone change. They wouldn't require a variance. Technically, that would be the better route to work for this proposal.
Any other questions? Hey, uh, we'll go ahead and open up to the applicant, uh, where the applicant representative, uh, go ahead and take the job.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Thanks for, uh, for hearing us on this. I'm actually going to have Corey Anderson, the owner, come up and just give you a little bit of history uh, over the last year that we've been, uh, working on this. So I'll let him start and then I'll, I'll finish up.
Okay. If you state your name from the record, even though you just said your name, sure.
Corey Anderson, uh, my wife Pam. And, uh, we appreciate, uh, your time. I know that I'm taking up lots of people's time today, and so thank you for, for sharing that. Uh, what I'm going to share with you is of absolutely zero disrespect to Jake and, and others who are here from the, the previous, uh, administration. I want to talk a little bit about Milton Allerton. Thanks to Scott Comfort from Sewell Associates. He's been helping us through this process and he's been amazing to work with. Jennifer Owens from Sewell Associates was originally working with us. And she met with the Bonner County Planning Director Milton Allerton about a year ago and presented him with a plan to divide off this lower part of the property. After their meeting, uh, this Owens told us that the planning director said that we would have a good chance of having the property divided, but that he wanted to see that we were able to get water on the upper portion of the property and also that we could per- percept it. Since that time, both Jennifer Owens and Milton Allerton are not involved with the impact or with the project and have moved on. Uh, and with nothing in writing, we are only able just to relate the verbal account of that. Uh, we didn't know that they would leave, so in good faith, we moved forward with the recommendations. We now have two functioning wells on the property, a functioning septic below and a finalized per test approving a septic above. GIS approved driveways both below and above and a brought power into the Northern Lights resulting in two separately built electrical accounts and have a building below and a building permit above. I know the verbal discussion with the previous plan director has no bearing on the facts presented today by Mr. Comfort, but I wanted to share this little bit of the history. That's the kind of how we got here and why we did what we did. Didn't want to make the assumption that we were so egotistical that we would just go ahead and do those projects without approval, but that was kind of our good faith reasons for what we did, and I just wanted to share that with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, back to the owner direct.
Again, my name is Scott Comfort. We're Sewell Associates. Uh, just going to give a little bit of history, um, and, uh, present some facts that I don't think have been considered in this. Sir, way to go back on this. Okay, there it goes. Okay. Uh, so this is, um, maybe a little bit different, uh, of a variance exhibit than what you guys have seen. I don't know if you guys have that uh, in your file, um, before, uh, the exhibit showed Car Creek with a different alignment. Uh, I'd really like to point out the Car Creek Road alignment. Uh, that's what has changed, um, uh, about twenty years ago, and I think that's what's going to make this, uh, a little bit different than, uh, than what we've looked at before. Uh, just to give you an overview of the site, uh, this is the site, uh, here. You can see Car Creek coming through and clipping the corner. Uh, if I could draw your attention, not only to Car Creek Road, but, um, the cut bank that they took out to make that road possible. Um, just a little bit of an overview from the site. Uh, we do have an existing small log, log home uh, on the site. There is an existing trailer that's on site. Uh, as mentioned before, we do have an existing well down below and an existing septic system. Uh, we do have access, uh, that's existing off of Highway Two that has accessed those homes. Uh, and then if you look up towards the top, you can see, uh, that's voltage road, um, the Bloods who actually, uh, uh, own this land before, um, brought that road in as an easement to get to, uh, to the top portion of the road or to the site. I'm sorry. Uh, this is the, the future home site. Um, we do have a building location permit for approximately this area. Um, the Andersons do intend on, on building a home and living up here. They bought the lot with the intention of living up here. Um, as mentioned before, we do have a new well that's installed uh, with a permit and a well ID, and then, uh, the person test has been done, uh, and we have an approved permit for, uh, for the septic up, up top. Uh, so again, the standards review that we've already looked at, um, uh, I think that we've already determined, uh, the, the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant and that the granting of the variance is not in conflict with the public interest. Um, there is some, some discussion, some argument probably, uh, on, we believe that the conditions apply to the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity. Uh, and I'd like to, to prove that to you today if I can. Uh, this is the old variance exhibit, uh, and maybe some of the confusion as to why we've gotten here. Uh, this, uh, was done, uh, kind of when we first started this, uh, and the Car Creek Road alignment, it, there has been, uh, some confusion on this. Uh, there's still not a deeded, um, right away for Car Creek Road when they did, uh, realign this. Um, they did that in the nineties. Um, here's the new variance acceptance. If I just give you a little bit of history of Car Creek Road, uh, this is from the sixties. The Blood family uh, own this land. Uh, this is the first survey that I could find on record, uh, of that. You can see this is, uh, the subject parcel that we're looking at today. You can see that the Car Creek Road, this was proposed back then, uh, but this is where it was proposed and this is where they built that. Um, and up until the mid nineties, this is how, uh, people accessed, uh, the area to the north of us, uh, from Car Creek Road. In the mid nineties, uh, the Idaho Transportation Department came through. They did the widening for Highway Two. Uh, it was, uh, at, before this, a thirty three foot right away. They changed that, uh, as you know, it, it varies. Uh, the yellow arrow, the arrow there is going to show where our site lands. It's going to be right up there in the top corner. It's actually going to be two pieces of land. Uh, but it went from thirty three feet to about seventy five feet, uh, is what they took away from, from this parcel when they did that. Uh, the area highlighted in yellow up there, that's where a part, part of our parcel is at. Uh, this is part of the confusion when it comes to the Car Creek Road realignment. When they did that, um, they, they created this area and this is where it comes in now, but, um, it was never conveyed, so there's no deed for this. Um, you can see here, this is a, a survey that the, um, that the Blood family had done, and this is the parcel that, uh, is in question. You can see it doesn't really look the same. Uh, it looks like, uh, either the state or the county took away a portion of that parcel in order to, uh, create that cut bank for Car Creek Road when they realigned it. However, again, it did never, it never got conveyed. Um, if we go back here, parcel A was conveyed, parcel E was conveyed, parcel C was conveyed, but this record is survey the line that goes between parcel B and parcel D or the, um, where the Car Creek Road right alignment, realignment got done was never conveyed either. Um, so there is a little bit of confusion. We had a hard time tracking it down. We've reached out, uh, to Idaho Department of Transportation. We tried to find anything on record that we could find, but, uh, as it stands today, um, there is no conveyment for that, and the Andersons still own, uh, this portion that shows that was cut out for the realignment. It is deeded to them. Uh, the old Car Creek Road alignment looked like that. You see the parcel there today. It actually looks like this, uh, from the nineties. And that's what the parcel looks like. That's what's steeded to the Andersons today. Uh, you can see that cut bank that shows it a little bit better, um, how much they've taken off, how steep that terrain is. Um, just gives you an idea of what we're looking at. Part of the issue, obviously, while we're here, why they wanted, um, why they would like to, uh, create this line in here, uh, from that bottom portion where the homes are right now to the top portion where they would like to build, there's, there's no access to get from the lower portion to the upper portion. Uh, the, the incline is too steep. Uh, we've talked about topography. We've had issues with the topography. Um, you know, we, we said, you know, this makes it a little bit different. It's not just the topography, though, you understand. Uh, it's that cut bank that's been put in there that makes it so difficult. Uh, I believe, and I can, believe that I can show you, um, after I show you this, um, that there would have been a way to, uh, to put a road in there had that cut may not have been there. But as it stands today, this is the only access that the Andersons have to get from the top portion, uh, to the bottom portion. Uh, they've got to drive out voltage road. Uh, they've got to get onto Car Creek Road and drive down Car Creek Road. They've got to get onto Highway Two. And then they've got, they can access the lower portion of the road. It's about a half a mile distance to get from one side of their property to the other. Uh, as a surveyor, uh, which is my profession, uh, I've been able to, uh, to design and create roads going through properties. I just pulled off, um, uh, another parcel not too far away. Uh, keep in mind, these contours are forty foot contours. So from the bottom road up there to get towards the top of this property, uh, at forty foot contours, it's about a hundred, a hundred foot incline. Uh, if I were to design a road, uh, to go out to, to look at something or just to be looking at paper, um, I'm sure you know, I, I'd be looking at these contours. If I wanted to create a road, I would design it. I would follow those contours at a gradual, like, you know, gradual line to get from one contour to the next, uh, going back and forth, uh, at a gradual incline so that I could get up to the top. It would look something like that. Uh, on this particular property, um, if the red line wasn't there, you could probably see that is the road. So, uh, if I had enough room, uh, even at a steep incline of a hundred feet, I could, I could get from the bottom to the top. Uh, the Andersons, it would look like this. If I wanted to build a road from the bottom to the top, I would follow that contour line. I would gradually cross those contour lines as gradually as I could without a steep incline, uh, so that I could get from one place to the next. Unfortunately, in the Andersons', uh, situation, um, I can't do that. Uh, this cut bank is too steep. Um, and it cuts off a portion of my property that doesn't allow me to, uh, to create any sort of road to get from the bottom to the top or the top to the bottom. Uh, again, if we look at that, um, it's just, it's just too steep. There's no way to do it. Uh, there's no way to put a road in here, uh, without doing some major excavation and road work, uh, the cost of a road to get from the bottom to the top would just be astronomical, uh, to do that. Uh, it just, uh, for reference, the, uh, the road that I pulled off as an example is, uh, the Andersons' next door neighbor. So this is the same ridge, uh, they have the space, uh, they have the room to make that gradual incline to get from the bottom of their property up towards the top of their property, being able to access their whole property. Uh, the Andersons don't have that. They don't have that, that accessible because of the Car Creek realignment. Again, this is the only way that they can get from the top to the bottom. I do believe because of the Car Creek realignment, um, that conditions apply to this property that do not apply. Uh, I've scoured through, um, GIS to try to find another example of a property that's affected like this. Um, I can't find one in this zone, in this area. Um, I, you know, there's no way I could go through the entire county, but I looked and I don't find any properties in the county that are affected like this because of something that the government did, the county, uh, in creating that Car Creek Road alignment, uh, cutting off the bottom from the top. Uh, I just, I can't find any. So my argument would be that, uh, that doesn't apply. There's just no other properties that have this, these circumstances. Um, these circumstances weren't created by the applicant. We already know that. This is something that, uh, the county did when, uh, when they realigned Car Creek Road. Uh, there's also the Bonner County Revised Code, uh, twelve dash six one six, uh, it's E four. When an original parcel or lot is divided by a public right of way as a result of some kind of governmental action, and this, in this case, it's going to be construction of a road, uh, thereby dividing it, each of the two resulting parcels or lots shall be deemed original parcels or lots and shall have the origin, origination date to that of the governmental action. Uh, it's on us to prove, to prove that. Um, I, I do believe that this comes into play here. I believe that, uh, this, this parcel is divided, uh, because of the, the realignment of Car Creek Road and that cut bank that comes in. Um, if I have to drive a half mile from one piece of my property, uh, get out onto highway, drive around, come back down, uh, I would consider that divided. Um, I believe that we can go back to the origination date, which would be ninety five, I'm sorry, ninety three, when this was done. To do that, I believe that the Blood family understood that. Um, when they had this, this survey that we have that was done by the Blood family is actually the same surveyor that did the work for the highway. Uh, it was done at the same time. I believe they understood with, that when, uh, when they did the highway, widened the highway, when they bought Car Creek around, they did the realignment for that. They were dividing that piece of land. Um, they were making it possible to go from one piece of, one side of the property to the other side of the property. I believe that's where that line came into play, uh, creating a line between parcel B and parcel D. Uh, and it's our request today that that line just be honored. Um, it wasn't conveyed that back then. We'd like to have it conveyed today and put that line right back where the Blood family had originally liked to put it. Uh, again, I think that we meet all the conditions, um, that would grant us a variance for this property. And again, we just, we want to put the line right back where the Blood family had originally put that line. That's my presentation, so I can take any questions.
Sir, this is the time. Sorry.
Go ahead, say it again.
Uh, could you expand on your statement about, uh, showing us where the line would be if it went back to the original line that you said?
Yeah, so this is, uh, this is the original line right here. So this is, this is the survey that was done in, uh, nineteen ninety three, uh, when they, uh, did the realignment for Car Creek. And so the, the Blood family, they put this line in right here, separating parcel B from parcel D. And that's just what, we would just, we would go off this survey and we'd like to have that line conveyed. It was put in, but it was never conveyed. Uh, we just would like to have, like to see it be conveyed.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for, yeah, representative?
Yeah, I think I've got a couple. The one thing, when you quoted our code and you said that the parcel is split by a a county road or a road or whatever. I mean, I think that that has a, the indication is, is that, that if, if you're like on a, I'm going to use a ten acre parcel and let's just use something really simple flat and you build a road right down to the middle of it, the county does, and sure, then it just makes it, creates two separate parcels. This is not the same, in my opinion, at all. And that's what, I know this because we, we've worked on this and we've, we've tried to make it to where it's like, hey, if there's a, some action that creates this, then this is what we want. Sure. This is not what we were talking about.
Sure. I, I, I understand that. Um, I, I respect it. I mean, though, it's a, I mean, from my perspective, I, I see what you're saying, but I also see, uh, you know, and again, I mean, I I would still have conditions that apply to this property that don't, they could, you know, apply to others.
I, I don't disagree.
So, you know, I just.
The special circumstance.
Yeah, I, I threw it in. I mean, it, it's a little fuzzy. I mean, I, I do believe that this property is divided, maybe not by a road going right through the middle of it, uh, but between the ravine that we can't cross. It, you know, had, had that cut bank not been there, I do believe that we could have created a road that would, would be able to travel on, on site. So I do believe in one sense, what you're saying, I, I, I agree. I just believe that it was divided in a sense that that cut bank made it impossible for us to build a road on the site, and we're still going to have to travel that half mile and get, you know, on Highway Two of Car Creek down voltage road.
And I think that, in my opinion, especially on five acres or less in this situation, that, that there's lots of parcels in North Idaho, especially in that area that are, that have the gradient that that allows for less than full use of your property. I think that that's part of North Idaho. A lot of times you buy ten acre, you may have one acre, two acre building envelope. The rest of it is pretty much just over the hill or up the hill. You know what I mean? That's just part of the deal.
Sure.
Yeah, when you buy a property that has a gradient like that, you have, you are restricted to, you know, a portion of that property being utilized. You know, it's not a flat, flat property, so you can just build a road, but, you know, I mean, the, I guess the other thing that you bring up is, is that if that isn't dedicated to the county, I mean, that's problematic in itself. I mean, we didn't do the red, I mean, they realigned it when they redid the road. Generally speaking, they take care of all the right of way and then they dedicate it to the county. Now, if that hasn't happened, that's problematic. That's a problem that, I don't know. That's a real problem.
So I guess I'm struggling a little bit here. You've got, right now, we've got a, a total parcel in size of four point six acres, and what you want to do is you want a variance to create two parcels that are well under the five acre. Now.
Yes.
And so your justification is the, the cut bank, which I don't disagree with, but, but I'm not sure how that access to the upper part really isn't to me part of the argument because it's, it's four point six acres. It's a five acre zone. I understand why you're asking for the variance, but, uh, you're making the assumption that the two parcels exist in right now, which technically they don't, correct?
Technically, it, it hasn't been conveyed. There's this record survey that it has not been conveyed. Yep.
So that was where I was having a problem with your argument, but I mean, I guess the cut bank thing, it makes total sense to me. The realignment, it makes total sense to me. It's the access, you know, the, the right to access to the upper part, um, of the, what would be lot two, which technically doesn't exist. And as Commissioner Conley said, there's a lot of property that, you know, that because of the topography, just, you're not going to be able to utilize the whole thing. So that's why I'm struggling a little bit with that. And because it's zone five acres and it's, it's, you know, well below five acres, you're creating two parcels that are, you're taking a four point six acre parcel, which is, you know, that itself will have five acres. I could almost buy off on that for one structure, for one structure there. But taking it into two lots, it's a little bit more of a, of a struggle for me to, to get there. On the other hand, I do think it's good you have water and sewer. That's a plus. So this, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to struggle with the argument that the cut bank is the reason why there's an issue, and it's really not. It was a great, uh, great chance of trying to make an argument to it, but I'm having a hard time getting that.
Cause it does have legal access from the top side.
It's just a matter of, of, of the drive.
It's the convenience more than, well, that's what I.
And I, and I get, you can't get to it from down below, but, but that's not really what we're focused on here. We're talking about creating two parties well under the, uh, zoning. And not that we haven't done, but it worked. Uh, we have done for special circumstances, but.
Yeah, true. We've done it through a variant, so.
No, it's been using through it yet.
The variance has been used to, you know, like, say, if you had a, a nine point one acre and you wanted to split it into two, you have used that to just, I mean, if it's below that, you know, what.
Did we do something?
Yeah, within, uh, last year, uh, there was something that was approved. It was a five acre piece, uh, you split off four, four acres, and then there's a, like a one acre triangle. This is just two lots over from that.
Yeah, I don't remember.
That had a, that had a line going through.
Oh, that's right.
Language to the.
Right, that was right. Okay.
But it, it is the point.
I didn't remember. We did something up there that was different. I didn't remember we did something up there that was different. Well, I couldn't recall recently, there was power line.
So that survey was done years ago, but it was never recorded.
It was recorded, it's recorded. It's a recorded survey. Um, and um a parcel C right above it is a parcel and it's, what is that, two and a half acres?
Is it listed?
Yeah, two point six, yep.
Tax office?
I, no, I don't believe, I, that, that line was never conveyed. It surveyed, recorded, never conveyed along with I have a feeling it wasn't conveyed because of the confusion going on there with um that, that portion that they took out for the realignment. Uh, but again, that, that was not. Yeah, it's all one parcel number. Yes.
So the parcel north is two point nine or two point nine three acres.
Well, it's a different configuration than what he showed, a little different, right? I mean, that doesn't align with the, the site plan you have for the.
Yes, no, it doesn't, yeah. So that's not gonna align. Let me see if I can.
Go back to that.
Which one do you see? You wanna see that one or do you wanna see the?
Go back to the one where you showed.
Where it's split, this one, I guess.
Okay.
I think you, at the beginning, you had a, uh.
There's the blow up of that.
Right. Right there.
Yeah.
That shows the proper car creek line.
Yes, that's the proper car creek line. It doesn't show the cut bank, just where the, where the road is.
Boy, that, that can, that uh that lack of easement or lack of whatever ownership by Bonner County is that me really concerned in. I mean, I should, what I surely don't wanna do is, is move forward with something that is just partially correct. I mean, if we're gonna do it, if we were to do it, we should be addressing all of the issues.
So there's no, on lot two, on your proposed lot two, there is no easement for car creek road?
There's not, nothing's conveyed. This is what's, what's conveyed. We made this drawing based off um instrument number, you know, whatever it was for car creek road. This is what's conveyed. But this is what it looks like.
It's not, it's not time for that. We're just, there'll be a time for public comment and you can make some data.
Okay, well, okay, for now.
Yeah, that's good for now. Okay.
I, I may have more questions.
Okay.
Yeah, well, there'll be a chance for rebuttal if there's.
Well, so I thought this was gonna be like an easy one or something, like push the easy button.
Okay, well, thanks. We would like to have a seat. Is there, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to public comment, either wish to speak in favor of this file? Um, anyone neutral? Anyone opposed? Are you neutral or opposed? Neutral? You wanna say a few words?
I was just gonna ask, uh, it was the fact that those line that we're talking about, that rights of two properties not being conveyed. Is it also realized that the car creek road cuts across uh the Anderson property on the lower? It cuts across the crossing, the crossing hand property and that, that whole thing is not conveyed to my knowledge. So that's, that's a bigger problem, actually. Talking about snap, who's in the, in the future, right?
Anything else you wanna say? This is just a comment.
Can you identify your name for the record?
Uh, what was that again?
Your name.
Dan Blood.
So were you part of this? Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Were you part of this then? I mean, the family?
Uh, yes, I negotiated the sale of my mother's property. I was in St. Andrew's. And so did the Andersons.
But were you around when they, these roads were being changed and all that stuff?
I get like ninety eight percent of the public meetings during and before the, the actual start of the project.
So can you let us in on why you think that maybe it was never conveyed to the county? Because usually what it'd be is conveyed to the state and then the state turns around and dedicates it to the county is what's happened on highway ninety five.
Yeah, and that makes good sense. But to my knowledge, it was the fact that the main office was in Corlaine, the person that was ultimately in charge at the time had retired before the project. I believe before the project completed. And uh there was another person that worked as the project manager for the Department of Transportation. Uh, his last name was Florence. I don't call his first name right now, but uh he would have been the primary mover and shaker. And making sure that got aligned and I don't know why it felt like. I was surprised to see that when it was re-surveyed, uh, the southeast corner that cuts across car creek, uh that's the corner of the property that I explained of ownership to the Andersons when they purchased it. So they have a whole bunch of useless land that is problematic to going forward with the project, which if, add in the pad. That construction we probably could have got twice, you know, for the property that we did, but that's neither here nor there. It's just a point of observation.
I'm just like, wow, this doesn't, it just gets more complex.
Yeah, I know. I thought this was gonna be an easy one. Jake, what's going on? This is Jeff's in my last.
That's probably why, right?
They're going away, present? Y'all get to come back two more times.
Yeah, okay. Is anybody else who wishes to speak in opposition? I don't see anybody else here, but I have to ask.
There's nobody up on it.
Mr. Stolz.
No, I've done the M E M, but I'm not gonna share it.
Okay.
We're all right with that, cause we get plenty of it.
Yeah, we hear a lot of, okay. Okay, well, I'm gonna, why don't you, why don't we do rebuttal just so we can get some questions in here? Actually, Swanny, I, I don't know. If we if we approve this variance, can we get a, uh, an easement for that piece of car creek where car, road cuts through lot two? We put that in this condition.
Yeah, we'll have to ask I T D that.
Otherwise, they own the road.
Well, I just think if there's a way to, I mean, if there's a way to get that, at least get that. Because technically right now, yeah, that's.
I'd like to see it cleaned up before a person moves forward. I, I, that may not sound very fair to the, the landlord, but oh, moly. I, I just don't see us m- multiplying an issue by ten times by doing something like this when we don't have clarification.
Well, and that's why I was hoping that there was a way we could correct that with this.
That, that.
Because it's, because the, the, the line, the line wasn't the owner's fault, that it's not conveyed. Trying to figure out the basis for, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, at this point, we keep saying, well, we didn't know what ever happened.
Yeah, we all know now. Yeah, we're slick, William.
Yes, if you need to be here, so probably not, so he's not here.
Oh, okay.
I, I think if the county was that concerned, then we should apply for an elevation, to validate whatever. Is where it is, right?
Yeah.
So there's, there's a separate title forty action that falls outside of the, that we do. Whether or not.
Cause that really has to be cleaned up before we go forward. Cause it's, there's, I mean, there's some real issues with that road reroute. Can't leave I T D Washington. You see that I T D dropped bombs.
And you know, in, in some ways, if, if the proposal or if, if what they wanted to do I T D when they did this was to make two separate lots and to make this road relocation and do all of those things all at once. Then I would be like, okay, yeah, that's, that's exactly what they intended to do and I'm, I'm behind that. But since it didn't get done, you know, there was barely, to me, there was very likely that that was all part of the deal. Is we're gonna give you this, you give us that, and then we're gonna all walk away. I don't know. Mr. Blood, maybe you can um weigh in on that, but.
Did you sell it before the realignment?
No.
Oh, no, no. So is that, was that was a close sale?
Just.
Yeah, that road was done, what, ten years ago?
Yeah, ninety, ninety, like ninety, ninety, twenty, quarter century ago. Disappointing.
Yeah, I was here when it was done. It seemed like it wasn't that long.
So how do you, I prefer to kick the can down the road and you see what? Of course I do, right?
Well, but we have it at our, to our credit, we have not kicked the can down the road any of the other ones. This was just a little bit.
Well, maybe one, I don't know, but, well, recently. Well, yeah, it was recent, but. I just, I don't have the answer for this stuff.
I don't have any recommendations.
Well, they recommend.
I know, but I mean, knowing, can you elaborate the recommendation?
I don't see how even the road realignment justifies the higher density in an R five, right? That's our premise of our denial, our recommendation for denial, why that unit examiner denied it, is because regardless of the topography on the site or not, there, there's a hard justification to get to. Now we need a, I think we're gonna have, so yes, we have a record survey from, you know, a while back. It wasn't a landage, but there are two separate lots.
Yeah, it really should be a reason at the, at the least.
Even at a reason, we haven't done the analysis of it.
Right.
Um, anytime you go below two and a half acres, you have to have some kind of shared service, right? So in this case, we have two separate services. Why no one recommended that, I'm sure.
Yeah, we would definitely be at odds with our own ordinances with respect to the size of the parcel to the services.
That would have to be added as a commission if you were to go towards an approval and have a shared service. Reading like your suburban density requirements. So, which is a recreation, more recreation.
Cause recreations plus water.
Yeah, that's just common.
Yeah.
Yeah, a complaint, to get to his own change of complaint, not change of your recommendation.
Yeah.
It's our five.
Yeah, I think we're really getting the car.
So is there other parcels in the general vicinity that are smaller than five? I think that I have read that.
One of the north is two point nine three and there's one of, that little triangle because the power line we approved last year.
There's several on the east side of the road on car creek as well.
Can you pull up the area on our mapping system and back out so we can see, uh, so out of curiosity?
Yeah, so this is the one we were talking about. It's here and here. This is approved. Uh, there's a lot of conditions that went into that. Uh, there are higher density down in.
Yeah, across the highway, yeah.
And then across the highway as well. Or across the river as well. Um, to answer the other question on that, twelve dash six one six.
Yeah, I would just say that, I did say that I take a neutral stance, but I would like to mention that it's been a long fight with the uh planning and zoning, uh, having lived there since nineteen seventy nine. When I purchased the property from my parents, it was owned suburban recreation. And you could have a lot size uh smaller than two acres, I believe, with special permission, you could do a one acre lot. And uh for years, on the south side of the highway, it remained suburban recreation. And uh the reasoning had never been satisfactorily explained to me why in the heck they ever went to a five acre rural on land that obviously not was or not, doesn't lend itself to a rural of a, of a small farming situation. It's, it's gully, it's got a lot of spring water. It's really not suitable for anything but putting home. And um I'd just like to bring that up when you're talking about how you know, it's so viable to keep it five.
So that, that would have been a good thing to lead with. The fact is to say, uh.
Our tires, we're gonna have to rezone it back down to five eighty, so.
The entire, like, river corridors you go down was, was like a recreation zone back in the, I would say, right? The reason it was R five has to be with the level of services available, right? So if you get to suburban or red, you have to have some kind of large shared wells or water sewer districts and those exist along, well, we don't have any documented taxi districts for water sewer, right? It's not like the switch to R five.
Yeah.
Well, plus the gradient, I mean, again, the topographic, I mean, when we were trying to I think what they're trying to do is reduce the amount of parcels on very steep ground because that's, it's just a, not a great.
Yeah, one of the real primary drivers is always gonna be sewer and water.
Right.
Um, especially on smaller parcels, you got that one point, whatever it is, one point five.
So, um this, if this road was dedicated by the government, right, the governmental action, this would, would go back to that other code recommendation, right, the split by a, a highway. So this is actually really the example, it's right next to it. Um, I haven't done a research on whether, I just found it as I was looking. There's a handful of these lots and that's what that code is probably referred to, right?
Okay, at about two o'clock off Blue on the right, take your cursor up. That parcel right there where the little menu is, how big is that?
That's an acre and this is two point seven, this is two point eight.
But again, it's surrounded by. Yeah, again, but the, the problem comes to me anyway, that, that's why you that's your zone change, you say, because it's surrounded by these side portions, that it's a more fitting use of that.
Yeah, zone change would have been more appropriate, because then at least you could have made the argument, hey, look, we've got around.
Yeah, look at everything.
And the ninety three uh survey with the realignment of the road kinda shows that intent. But it never got, it never got finished process.
It might have met zoning at the time, so again.
At that time, it is.
And back in oh eight, this was all rezoned on R five, people, the services.
The lack of services.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead, we're kind of in a free form.
I was just gonna aggressive for the side, so, you know, during the time that it did switch to rural uh, all of the river uh frontage and or south of the highway remain uh, suburban recreational and there, if you're worried about uh sewer and water uh having an impact, it would seem like those would have been the first ones to limit a lot size on because the preparation of more homes there and more of environmental.
I think a lot of those, a lot of those day use, and that day use cabin, like day cabins, you know, S toilets or anything, I don't know.
I have no idea.
So like, it seemed like we took up some of those.
We have. A lot, a couple of them were, were just used for.
Yeah.
No, no rescue.
So when that was surveyed ninety three, that was loaned as urban recreational, which could have been down a smaller one acre.
Which.
Which would have been the intent of that servicing. But it never got conveyed.
You can go two and a half.
Well, how short that process could be for them to get the zone changed and back to brick and urban, right? Because they're surrounded by it.
Well, no, it's the whole area is zone R five or ten.
I know, but no, five or ten, they're all three ones.
Right, yeah, so I, I'd have to give the analysis on a zone change to recreation, but it typically requires some kind of urban like services, right? So what there is available in this area.
Yeah, whether it be community water, community sewer or.
Probably not formal. What, interesting.
Yeah.
Like Christie and wrote.
And the, the zone change route being a health plan map change, that's a much more in-depth, bigger process than a variance, so they, they won't be in a variance, and probably the migration type.
So, but the, the issue that I find a little bit daunting is that if, I know Milton fairly well and he would have thought that he would have backed it up with an email. I mean, he generally did that. And at least with my dealing with him.
Yeah.
Um, or some sort of correspondence other than just having a conversation. But, I mean.
Go ahead. Might as well, we're just.
It's a pretty cruel today.
At least you're identifying it directly.
So, were you as well with Jen at all? She talked to me. Did, were you involved with Jen at all, and she talked to you during those original conversations of Milton, maybe any of those?
I don't recall talking about this specific project early on, no.
I didn't know when you, when I started working there or not, I'm just.
Right, you knew of any information, and I don't know if Jen ever sent any emails between them, or she doesn't work with someone, so it's more, right? So that's why we're kind of, you know, that sticky situation, because we're kind of going up their face, and we have nothing to prove in writing, and we didn't know that we needed to at the time, and we just point by. And told them. And, uh, how this kind of just makes sense, there's no other properties that have, you know, buildings or access right on the main, or down below, but. It's just kind of a, makes sense why, and so we went ahead and did. What, uh, the recommendations that we were told and. And I got a show. I guess I'm rehearsing.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Are we doing rebuttals, or we just? You what?
Yeah. We never did allow rebuttal.
Yeah, go ahead. But can we go back, I mean, can we go back to the survey?
Maybe like a few of us.
Yeah, yeah.
I. I mean, is there a way for us to do a conditional? I mean, if we. If the Andersons would be willing to give up this portion. Where the cut bank is at. And then create that line, I mean, is there, is there a way to do a conditional approval? Um. By going back to this. To the survey?
Well, I think you're, I need to struggle, I'm having is looking at the actual lot sizes. Um. Even suburban or recreational. It would be a struggle primarily because you don't have the urban services, urban-like services. To meet the criteria. Or either one of those zones, even.
But sometimes the codes say that it should have, or it shall have.
Anything below two and a half acres is required, or shared well, or shared systems.
And we can, what are those parcels right there, though? They're shown there, and what are the sizes of those? Does it say? I can't.
Yeah, it does. So, so the bottom parcel B is one point five, is the one point five four to be exact, when we go back and recalculate it. And then the one above is the two point one. Um. Is what that parcel shows up as.
So, uh, at this point, there's two existing wells, why would it be required and for two people to share a well? Being two wells are already there.
I'm just telling you.
Technicalities, and we, and, and we've already spoken with the Andersons, and they would be happy that we can write that easement.
Uh, to where there's a shared well, um. Yeah, I don't know if that means they both have to share it, or if one goes out, the other person has access to the other, you know, to the other one, uh, but, but the Andersons have. Uh, said that we would, you know, we would, could beat that conditional approval, yeah.
And Panhandle Health gave you a, uh, they did a perk test on the lot two and. Had no issues?
Yeah, yeah, it's been approved. I've got the paperwork for it if you want to see it.
All that up there probably.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how to get there.
Well, I think you gave an option, but I'm not sure. We're able to do that in this setting. Like. If you conditionally approve it.
You can add condition.
Go ahead. Are you, are you Cammy's dad, by the way?
Yeah, okay. Now, I would just point out that, uh. Historically, and far as I know, still. The right of way is explained, uh, as being fifty foot wide for the whole of Car Creek Road. Which is a county rule. So. If, if the property that the, uh. Roads now, uh, occupy is. Uh, was reconvealed for the benefit of county owning the property. They would only need, in essence, to take a fifty foot right away, which would still leave. In theory, a lot of part of land with, with, uh. The parcel which. Cut like. Is now a cut bank, which would add.
Cause that cut bank's a whole lot bigger than fifty foot.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I think that that's part of the issue too, is that, that with the loss of that property. Reduces the size of the, the original property, the, right?
But that's not reflected in a lot too, because there's no.
Wouldn't have to take that whole.
It would actually may have had three acres.
I think the, you did. Account for that, because at one point, if you read in the file, it says five point. Something, five point four or five point something, and then it's reduced clear down to four point. Because you say, in your description, you say that because of that, the, yes, cut and all that stuff, that property been lost.
That reduces down to four point six.
Yes.
Okay.
So it wa- it was, I think, originally over five.
Yeah, then we saw the, I recall it by five point six.
Oh, yeah.
But they have a specific, they have a. An approved perk on the three.
And then existing on the other.
So that, well, yeah, and, and it's, you have a well in here already?
Yes, two wells.
Well, each parcel empowers.
Would be so.
See, they can still build.
Right, no, I just, I, well, I'm trying to equate this to. Like a suburban zone where there's. There's gotta be, you know. Right.
Assistant. I know, well, or try. I think what we. You know, if, if you did equalize the parcels, that gets you pretty close, and then they need to be looking at. A possible variance, because you're, you're close to the two point five.
Well, this is R five, Johnny, not so over till.
Right. No, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to come up with a path forward.
Yeah, we're working pretty hard to try to.
Yeah. We're literally using the last best use of our brainpower as commissioners.
You can see it draining, actually.
Yeah.
There's a bit of smoke coming out of my ears here.
There's a recharge needed.
Oh, man.
I'm gonna be going with this, I thought it'd be more sense to do, I'd be using size minimum, it's giving you dual services essentially. And have the lower one be a larger, I think it's a eleven hundred.
Make it, yeah, make the, make lot, make lot two the parent property and.
Not even split lots.
It's just, just leave it as one and then do it, do it ADU.
Sure, but they would, that's not what they requested, that's just, when I looked.
Well, if you look at their application, though, they, they, they clearly state that they want to sell this. So it's like, that, that was my thought too, you can still have two viable houses. Not here, so.
They've got the services.
I don't want to control some.
Yeah, I'm gonna figure, I mean, I, I'd love to be able to prove this, but I'm struggling without making it. But it made it work. Hmm. What pride is?
I don't have it, you know, I mean, to me. To me, we can't. We can't seriously. Consider approving this. It has to go through a zone change, it'd be a great time to clean up the rest of it.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead, and I'm gonna go ahead and take it, is there any other questions?
I don't have a problem.
Don't wanna go ahead and just move straight to deliberation.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, go ahead.
Um. Like I say. In this situation, with all these different variables, I just don't think that variance is the right way to approach it. So if, you know, if you were led down that path, I apologize to. You and all the time you've wasted, but. To me, um. The situation you've got. To me would warrant a zone change, and you could very easily do the things you want to do, but, um. You, you know. It could, like I say, a zone change with variance would, and then. It would be nice to be able to work out this, this whole, uh, you know, I don't.
Easily, right?
Yeah, but, um. I don't know, it's, it's a tough call because. Somebody dropped the ball, or otherwise we wouldn't be sitting here, having this.
Yeah, I, we're, we're close to bone calling right now, I just. So we're, so what we're faced with is, is that we'd be in violation of our own, of our own code, um, and that problematic. Even on a variance level.
What a big deal in the form of business, don't think.
Well, they gotta do a complaint change as well.
The complaint map change on his own challenge.
Yeah.
So I.
And then they have to readjust, they have to look at readjusting the property line so that the, and balance out the two parts, so they're closer to that two point five acre each. For it to be an easier sell.
Or they could run a pipe down to the other one.
They gotta prove, they gotta prove steward, technically, they gotta prove perk, and they gotta well. I mean, it's like, they got, they got, they got the services there, but the, the one point five acre thing is, is, is a problem, especially in the R five zone.
Yeah, let me ask a question. Let's say we do this with condition that we have a shared well. And they run a pipe down there to the other place.
Don't say that.
We still have two different parcels, that's the, that's the, that's the hook, isn't it? You got two separate parts, they could, it'd be easiest to do one and just do the, do the ADU thing, but. And then we wanna sell that other, that lot one.
I don't know, I'm trying to make it.
Well, I know.
Yeah, I know, I've been racking my brain trying to figure out the way.
You know, especially since all this happened back in ninety three.
Right.
And, but we.
And the state did it. So the problem is.
And then didn't report it.
The problem is, is you can't. You can't get there from where you're headed, because that's where I was headed when I said, you know, we'll, we'll just run a pipe, but. That's if they were already zoned.
Recreation.
Yeah.
But in ninety three, they were. When it was surveyed and split, it just never got.
Well.
By nobody's fault, but the state, I guess.
You're on the county, the reason.
Yeah. Yeah, the county created the problem when they did the rezon.
Hmm. Yeah, but.
You know, which doesn't make sense when you.
But that's, that's.
Doesn't lots there that's all under five, we're gonna zone it five.
Yeah, but that's why you go to a zone. True, that's how you get there.
Yeah, I think, I think the argument's easy to attain if you go through the zone change, the conflict change, and then you can point out the other smaller acreages around you and, and that kind of thing. Um, especially knowing in advance, you've got a, you've got a, uh. A group perk test by Panhandle, and the.
Yeah, everything else is in place.
You guys got anything else? I don't, I just, we'll see how we get there, I think, to, to various, just not the right, be able for this. Really isn't.
So we gotta hang a different, hang one. Whatever it is, struggle zone change.
Oh, yeah. Any other deliberations? We kind of, we beat this thing up about eight different ways, so I don't figure out how to make it work, it's just not bad. It's my opinion, I just think the factors, it's, it's the wrong bit.
The armed language, legal language.
Yeah, I know. Well, with that, I will go and entertain a motion to affirm the hearing examiner's decision. Or, or reverse, either way, whatever you guys wanna roll.
I do, since you're waiting for you to make it, but I'll do. Chairman, I'm going to affirm the hearing examiner's decision to deny the proposed variance request on the project file. D zero zero one five dash two two, requesting for the creation of a one point five four acre parcel and a three point zero six acre parcel. Where the minimum required lot size is five acres based on, upon the following conclusions, site condition. Do apply to neighboring lots, and the request is needed based on the actions of the owner. The topographical conditions are not sufficient grounds for creation of two separate lots. The highway easement would likely alter the size of the neighboring properties, not the subject parcel alone. In addition, the granting of this proposal would prove to be inconsistent. With the Bonner County Revised Code, BR, or B C R C. Twelve dash three four two C, the decision is based upon the evidence submitted up till the time. Of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing, I further adopt the following findings of facts. And conclusions of law as written in this staff report. Or amended during this hearing, this action does not result in the taking of private property, the action. That could be taken, if any, to obtain the variance is to file a new application with the planning department and meet the standards required by the Bonner County Revised Code. Or appeal the hearing examiner, well, it'll be that one, we're already there.
It would be to appeal the commissioners' decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Totally.
Okay, I would just ask, uh. On this, if an appeal was to come in the future. Would it? Uh, possibly be. Uh, new light in consideration of this, uh. Non-legal acts or use of. Of the Anderson's land by the county. As a trade option that.
Could, it still doesn't, it still doesn't get us over the lot size requirement. Or doesn't get us over the lot size requirement issue, no.
But that's up to the new, that's up to the new permission.
Yeah.
And, um. I, I don't have a problem with you bringing that. You know, and, and seeing what they say.
Okay, I need a second. A second, okay, so we have motion in a second, I will call.
Mr. McConnell.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, man.
Okay, with that.